A very happy 4th of July coming up. Let's before we get into our agenda, as always, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and go in the silence.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's jump right into our priority Carol Commission Boucher.
Thank you. Good morning to everyone. Got a holiday weekend in front of us. Everyone's excited, some time off of work. I'm gonna read off some of the new hires for the county. Andrew Slessinger, Maintenance Specialist, Farm Museum. Michael Carr, Lead Plumber, Facilities. Lindsey Davis, Office Associate, Citizen Services. Ron Nowicki, Management and Budget Analysis. Chad Wuleski, Program Engineer, Land and Resource Management. Ryan DeGraw, Cashier, Trainee, Collections Office. Simon Cadell, Cashier, Trainee, Collections Office. Tina Marlowe, Fiscal Technician, Public Safety. Thomas Milnes, Cashier, Trainee, Collections Office. Summer Moffett, Budget Intern, Management and Budget. Bradley Nailen, Technology Services Intern. Connie Yarborough, Assistant State's Attorney. Welcome aboard. Thank you very much. I think we have some site visits. Mr. Swam, you got something you can bring up for us? Out at the flood zone this past weekend, they did a remembrance ceremony for the 50th year anniversary of Agnes flooding. And also, thanks to our staff there, they set up a booth and gave public awareness on flooding. It was an absolutely wonderful event. And flooding is one of those issues that people don't pay attention to. And when they happen, they're absolutely devastating. So please keep awareness. And I want to thank all the staff members for putting it together. I did some, this is the culvert piping that deteriorates on us. And thankfully, our engineers and staff go around and inspect these. They fail. We're gonna be lining those. Here's Kathy Verts, Air Roads Administrator, checking this storm drain. You see all the debris piled up and some of the asphalt's missing. That is a telltale sign that that storm drain is failing. And when those roads are filled with water, it can lead to death and injury. So thanks to our staff going around inspecting all these facilities there. You see one of the pipes is half clogged with debris. And one of the posts to the guardrail, it's mounting, they rode it out. So it's finally important our staff goes around and specs these. There's Kathy looking down over the side. It was absolutely gorgeous. I'm very grateful to staff to take me out and show me these sites that are in our district. So I can keep our citizens and constituents updated. And then a site visit down in Union Bridge for Storm Water Management down off Locust Street. What a wonderful project it is. And I've learned a lot about Storm Water Management. They're staging up the system where it filters out the water before it goes down into Little Pipe Creek. This is both the contractors from Kibler Construction with our staff and Mayor Jones is in there. And I want to thank all those people out there who make this possible. We've run in some difficulties on projects. But fortunately, the interaction between air staff and a contractor helps eliminate these problems from not as bad as you think. There's some sinkholes out there since it is a flood plain and they're properly addressing those. I don't know if I have anything else or whether that's it. They get so busy with everything. I think that might be it. So thank you very much. And have a very happy 4th of July of all the people you love and celebrate our nation's birthday this weekend.
Commissioner Weaver.
Well, I just want to say, you know, the 4th of July coming up and safety is going to be extremely important. The county does have their fireworks display. Is that Sunday or Monday?
Monday.
Okay, coming up here at the Farm Museum. It's a great event. It's all supported by donations. So as always, Jack and crew do a great job putting that together. But think safety this holiday. Because always people buying fireworks on their own. And it's not that wet out there. It's still fairly dry. And people will start a lot of fires with firecrackers, roving candles going up or whatever. And just be aware, those straw fields burn fast. So, thank you.
And remember your animals.
Yeah.
Yes, good call.
Okay, Commissioner Wance.
More importantly on that is the fireworks safety when it comes to hand injuries and what have you and deaths. There were 18 deaths last year due to fireworks. So.
Really?
Besides setting the field on fire.
Just in Maryland or across the nation?
Across the nation.
Oh, okay, okay.
So anyway, just yeah, be mindful of that. Couple things. Had a planning and zoning meeting last night. A good work session. Still working on the ag zoning and going through that. And conversation was was robust and not quite to us yet, but they're moving as rapidly as they can so that they can get to us. So it's been interesting. So I applaud everyone on there. Dick, I think you made mention last week when I wasn't here, that you know, that group is really working well together. And there's some really great, there's some really great thoughts and ideas coming out of that group. And you can see it now really at play because you've got folks from various areas from around the county, which is important. So kudos to that group. And we'll be hearing from them as we continue with that. Carroll County was well represented last week at the Maryland State Fire Association Convention in Carroll. Kudos to the Westminster Municipal Band who always represents Carroll County and the city of Westminster very well. Here's my, here's my blinking to you to say, you know, we're always grateful for the funding that we receive from the city. And they, we had a good, we had a good group on the street. And we've sort of been labeled as the official band of the Maryland State Fire Association now. So they'll be performing at least five times over the next four days. And that's a volunteer outfit. So reminder, reminder of that, too, that you know, we've got a lot going, good things going on in Carroll when it comes to that. If you've been up 97 lately, there's steel in the air at Charles Carroll Community Center. I get giddier. Is giddier a word? Giddier with excitement as things continue to progress up there. That was a, that was a hard, hard fought battle to even get that thing up there. And I always thank my colleagues who voted for that. Because that area of the county deservedly will get a tremendous building up there that will bring that community together. So thank you to everyone. But if you get a chance to ride up there, what a great sight when you come around the corner and see steel in the air. So there's a young lady sitting in the audience that knows exactly what I'm talking about. So other than that, be safe this holiday weekend. And make sure that you celebrate in the safest manner. And yeah, come out to the Farm Museum. That's always a great event on Monday. One last thing. Dennis and I were at the Mako Legislative Meeting yesterday, virtual. Starting that process already. So we got an update. The convention's coming up in August, the Mako, with a conference. It's coming up in August. Will be well represented there. And that's, over 3,000 folks have signed up for that. So that should be a great event. And it's packed full of very good, it's a very good agenda from Storm Water Management to wastewater treatment to 911 and all points in between. So that's in August 18th, 17th, 18th, 19th?
Yeah.
I should know.
It's that third week.
Anyway, it's somewhere in August. So more to come on that. And had a good meeting yesterday. So, yep, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Frazier.
I'll segue right off of that into, at the meeting yesterday, we had a presentation on PFAS, which is the chemical that's in fire retardants and it's in other.
Everywhere.
Like Scotchgard and Teflon and stuff like that. It wasn't a very positive presentation. Because the wells that have been tested in Maryland so far, if you're looking at the, and look at it parts per trillion of PFAS that's in the wells. Right now, I think the threshold is 20 parts per trillion. And there's only a couple wells in state of Maryland that are above that. But the threshold that the, I guess EPA is looking at is 0.1 something parts per trillion. No wells past that. That would be every well in Maryland has to have some remediation. But the interesting part about that is there's not a measurement tool out there that can measure that low. So why do you set a standard you can't measure for? The lowest that you can measure for is 12 parts per trillion. Okay, that's the lowest you can measure for. Why set a standard below that? It doesn't make sense to me. And it hasn't, it's not the adopted standard, but we were told yesterday to probably, since they put it out there, they're probably going to go with that. Makes no sense. But that's happens a lot where things don't actually make sense and get passed.
Insert EPA here.
Yeah. I mean, I'm looking at that thing, when you, when we're listening to that, I'm thinking, the absurdity to use one of your words. I'm surprised you didn't say that. But it was the absurdity of that.
I did ask a question on behalf of the city.
You did. And it was.
Try to get a little bit of.
Yeah.
Of information on funding, coming back to help with those wells that have been identified as being affected. And.
And that we're already.
What?
The answer was, we'll wait and see because we don't know yet.
Yeah, so anyway.
Yeah. And it's just, I mean, you try to be proactive and get some things done. And if you are, you really don't get any help. And that's basically was the answer so far. And I was at the Westminster City Council meeting the other night. And I'd say the Mayor Becker is here today, not just because I was at her meeting the other night, but she came for other reasons.
For his favor.
A well-run meeting. I like to go to meetings that are well-run, get started on time, progress through, kind of like ours, and finish at a timely hour. I appreciate that. Also, I want to mention that, as everyone knows, elections are coming up soon. There's a lot of forums that are on, that you can go to the Community Media Center and see what the candidates are saying. You can go to the Voters Guide. You can go to the Legal, the 411 Vote. Could also go to the Ballmer Sun Voters Guide. There's a lot of information out there. Please check out the information. Don't vote off of a sign, off of a mailer that you get. Look, check out information. See if the candidate actually reflects your views. And if they do, I would think that's who you would want to vote for. And please get out and vote. That's all I have. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. And early voting starts on the 7th through the 14th, and then the primary is on the 19th. And I do believe our Board of Elections worked very well locally with the state in getting everything set up. And you know, real strong yeoman's work. So yeah, I appreciate those comments. It's a civil duty. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to highlight a great part of Carroll County, and that's the Infinity Center down in Eldersburg off of 26. It deals with autistic children from their infancy, basically ages, well, toddler, I guess. Yeah, 18 months toddler, that's a toddler, through about five years old. And what's cool is it's run by Humannum. And Humannum uses apprenticeship programs and earn grants and a lot of other opportunities, working with the state with labor. So I was able to take the former Secretary of Labor and Commerce, Secretary Schultz, through that. So she was, you know, very appreciative, seeing the fruits of her labor and working to establish those apprenticeship programs. And next step is to work with the Infinity Center and nest them into the school system. So I have an upcoming meeting with the school system and the Infinity Center to focus on our children and their needs. So to me, that's a priority here in Carroll County. Before your Mako meeting, gentlemen, I had a subcommittee meeting. And to start looking at the, you know, which, which are priorities going to be. And we're going to start hopefully whittling that down. I don't think there was much whittling that happened yesterday morning. It was more of just a reception of the information.
It sounded like it was good whittling.
We got a few. We got.
Went from 40 to 25, according to Laura.
Yeah.
That's never happened before.
Oh, really?
I've sat on that for seven years, or eight years down.
Okay.
That's a good start.
Change your expectations.
I was.
Yeah, that's a excellent start.
Honestly, I was, you know, looking for a 15 or 10 to 15. So, okay, that's good. And so I look forward to continuing that conversation with all our colleagues across the state with Mako and our colleagues here. Yeah, like it was mentioned, July 4th coming up. Really enjoy the summer. You know, it's time to take off the ties. It's time to have an open collar, time to relax, time to put, you know, family in front of us and be with each other. To me, that is a strong part of being priority here in Carroll County. And enjoy it. There's, there's challenges always around us. But working together, we get a whole lot done. So, okay, that's my two cents for this morning. Let's get right into.
Before we do, if you don't mind, we have to mention that today's Mr. Burke's birthday.
It is.
Happy birthday, Mr. Burke.
You're 22?
Had to mention it for you, that's all.
Do we get to slap you or punch you or hit you or?
No spankings.
No, there's, there's a large group in here. Should we sing? I don't know.
No.
I'd rather be slapped.
Where's Chris Rock?
We're gonna do this in the most professional manner. Line up, okay?
Let's just keep talking, see how, how red that face could get. I mean, it's starting to get to the three, four different shades. And we're gonna get there. So, but I do appreciate that. Happy 60th birthday.
Thank you.
To our best legal advisor here in Carroll County.
Best one in the room.
That's pushing it a little.
Okay, let's start with.
All right.
With our FRF update.
Turn first.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mark?
Mark?
Who wants to come up?
Oh, no.
You want us to come up, Debbie?
Yeah.
Sure.
Come on up.
Sure.
All-star cast.
Yeah.
Where did I put this? Back.
Okay. I was like, that was seven slides. That was good. You were starting well.
Start on the last one. Oh, here.
Slide two.
There we go. Very good. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Debbie Staniford, Grants Office. I'm here with Jason Green, Department of Public Works, and Mark Ripper, IT, to answer any questions that you might have specific to their projects. Our last update on the FRF plan was in March. So we are back with a look at, we're going to look at your current funding allocations. We'll look at the state awards that we've received for broadband to date. You wanted an overview of how the municipalities were spending their FRF funding. So we'll take a look at that. Look again at the municipal water requests and then potentially make a decision about those projects. You, this is very small on the screen, but you have it in your packet. All of your funding is currently allocated. We have received all of the funding as well from the federal government. So it's in our bank account. For your reference, if you want to ask specifics about any project, there is, each project is numbered. And I've added the status. All projects are moving. I'm going to point out a couple of things, but all projects are moving. But the only one that we have not committed yet, it's allocated but not committed, is the remainder of the fiber connection money.
And Debbie, this, this is available to the community, this slide?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So I apologize that it is small font, but it's definitely available.
And I don't know if I can make it any bigger. But yes, it is.
Ms. Staniford, I knew this one. Was it item nine for the historic jail withdrawn? What's this? Why?
That was one that I wanted to point out to the board. That's a change from the last time. Since the Sheriff's Headquarters has moved up in the CIP, and that was going to be a very expensive renovation. And Jason can certainly speak more to it. Because there are no, there's no current air conditioning there, that it made sense to, to withdraw that and to move the HVAC down into the other projects. I will also say that we have two under design and we are waiting. The other four are pending until we get cost estimates back on the top two requests.
And that was a very good call because I went over and toured that old building and it, the old stone building is just not conducive at all for the modern technology we need to apply. So, Mr. Green, thank you.
Okay. So as I said, the HVAC, we're doing the first two and then wait to see what the quotes are for that before we move down the list into the rest of the HVAC projects. Of course, municipal water projects, Project Eight are still pending your decision. And then 22 is the fiber connections. There's, we were waiting for the state broadband decisions. We have those now. So any questions about the project list?
The municipal water supply, we had talked about possibly putting more money into that, but you're saying all the money's already been allocated. So is there any additional money put into that?
So right now, you have 2.2 million. And so we can talk about that. That's one thing that, I have a couple options for you. I want you to see what is eligible and how much you're short. So that'll be part of the presentation.
All right, thank you.
And then I have a couple of ideas, but you know, just to spark the discussion.
And Mark, you've done a great job with the team in getting grants for the county in addition to this. Are there any other grants that are still pending that you're working through that will either adjust this cost or what are your thoughts?
Next slide.
It's a segue.
Was that, did you set that up in tension?
I did that. I did a segue for you. This was all about you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
I appreciate it.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
I love it when I anticipate questions. I hate it when you ask questions that I don't anticipate. So so far, we're doing great. So this is an overview of the broadband money that we applied, that we've applied for it to date in the first table. So we have been awarded just over 12 and a half million dollars in federal pass-through state, which would serve potentially 1,500 households. There's county match in there. Some of that, those early, those first couple of grants were actually county dollars. Then the infrastructure and neighborhood grant, you used FRF money to match those projects. There are four pending opportunities coming up. These will also pass through the state. You can see what the potential award to the state is. We don't have any details about those projects. But we anticipate, you know, we will certainly look at each one of them and apply if there's any, you know, if there's a good project that we can apply for. But we assume that we will apply for all four of those. But detail's pending. We don't know what the, what they will offer and what we will be able to apply for. So that's where we are with the state broadband.
All right, when you say these are awarded, are they gone out to bed already? Do we people, are we ready to move forward with these projects?
I can talk about it if you. The first two there on the list, Halter Road and Garrett Road, Comcast has already started those builds. They're expected to be completed by December of this year. It was part of the grant requirement for them to get those done. Sullivan Road is, work is being done to try and move that one forward. The $10 million was just awarded about a month ago. We had a conversation with Quantum Internet Service, who was the winner of that. And they are moving forward in the process. Now, that $10 million, they have five years to complete that build for those 12. twelve hundred and six homes, so it's not something that's going to be completed in the next year or two. There will be sections that will be over time, but it's, they have five years to totally complete that. And then the neighborhood grants, there were five of those that were awarded, and they have to be completed within a two-year period, so, as we move forward.
The, the twelve hundred homes, there's a priority list, I would imagine, of those twelve hundred.
Well, there's the list that we can't prioritize, well, we can always tell people what we would like them to have them build, but we can't instruct them to actually do that. They have to decide what's best for them. Quantum picked out, looking at the unserved and underserved areas of the county, found twelve hundred homes that they thought that fit well, and most of those are in the north central portion, running from Westminster North there, moving forward, so.
And the reason I'm just bringing it up is expectation management for those homes. You know, if it's a four-year or five-year project, you know, do the residents have an expectation that this will be complete in, not tomorrow, like you said, but in two years or two and a half years, whatever it may be? Is that possible?
We will be able to provide that information as we move forward.
Yeah.
One of the issues that we're having right now, and it's not just Carroll County, it's nationwide because of all this fiber construction, is actually getting the fiber. So, we can do all of the build, get the conduit in the ground, have everything done, but we may not have the supply of fiber for a while. Right now, we're looking at a six to ten-month lead time to get fiber, and it's because everybody in the United States wants it, and they just can't produce enough of it at this point.
Wow. I can answer your question. I'll start forwarding the emails that I get to you.
What does that mean?
They want it next week, and they think they're getting it next week.
So that's, that's the whole point is...
Yeah, I'll start forwarding them to you, and you can take care of that.
No, it has nothing to do with forwarding.
But we will be able to provide estimates in the future, in the near future. Probably in the next three to four months, we'll have a much better idea how those builds are going to go.
Right, because those emails, you know, however many there are, providing them the expectations, you know, is important and communicating. So if you have the ability with this to provide over the next five years, you know, in, you know, relative terms...
Sure.
That's a great thing, you know, because you're right, everybody wants it today or tomorrow.
Right, putting out a timeline, I think would be very appropriate, so people know. And a timeline is not an exact timeline, but this is projected of what's going to happen, so people can see, this is where I am, this is the timeline, and then maybe some of the emails will stop, probably not, but at least they'll have a timeline out there, and I think that's very important to get out there.
And the other thing we're already working on, Commissioners, is I've already worked, started working in my GIS department, is we're going to put a page up on the website that will allow people to actually go in and put in their address, and tell them if they're in a build, and if so, what the build...
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, that would be good, because that's the challenge now, as they're anticipating the build and they see their roads on here, the folks that aren't listed are starting to yell louder.
Sure.
So while that all sounds wonderful, it's not, because the...
What's not wonderful? I'm not sure.
The folks that aren't in the build are further out now.
But they need, but they need to know if they are within this.
It's creating a lot of angst.
Well, they may not be farther out. They're, they're, there are, first of all, there are four other grants, and there's the county money that, so beyond the 3.2 million that we've spent here as a county match, we have another...
Fifteen?
You know, something.
Eleven point nine million.
Right.
So there was fifteen million, well, there's seventeen point eight million right now allocated to broadband across our infrastructure, you know, the projects that we're doing to county facilities, the grant, the match to these grants, and then what we haven't released yet.
Right.
And an RFP.
And we will be putting out an RFP in July for our money. Now that we know what the state has awarded, we're going to put out an RFP for the county match, so people will be able to apply.
Yeah, and that was my original question before we flip sides, which is, which is great, is are there other grants, federal or state, that we're also going after while you're ready to put out your RFP?
Yes, those are the four that are on that list there.
Okay, so there's no more than what we're looking at right now?
What we're looking at right now, as far as we know, no.
Okay, yeah, I think putting something on the web, like you said, having a timeline, like we shared, is important. So people will then expect it's happening, or it's not happening, or if it's happening, it's within such a time period. I mean, now, is all of this attention up in the Northwest? Is the ninety percent need of what's going on, or is it across Carroll County?
I'm sorry, ask that question again?
As far as the gaps in coverage.
As far as the gaps in coverage, right now, what's happening, Commissioners, is that there is infrastructure in Carroll County that is currently around the incorporated towns, and people are moving out from there. This first ten million dollars that Quantum has is going to expand that out further in the county, but it's still not going to get out to the edges. And what has to happen, unfortunately, is they got to build those middle miles there, and then once they're done, then they can apply for additional funding to expand those out even further. We can't go out into the northeast portion of the county, there's no infrastructure to get us there.
Dive into, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Comcast put in for a state grant, they were not awarded it. We've been in conversations with them, I think they're definitely going to apply to the county for that. They're in a little bit different situation than some of these other vendors, because they do have a lot of infrastructure out in the county, and what they'll be able to do, if they were a successful awardee, is they'd be able to fill in all those little gaps that are missing, because a road doesn't meet the twenty homes per mile requirement under the current contract that we have with them. So, and again, you know, unfortunately, it is going to take time. We really need to emphasize that, and while we'll be able to provide people estimates and all, know that the big issue is going to be getting that final piece of fiber in to make that final connection.
Right, okay.
Any other questions about...
One kind of sidebar question is, it was brought, it was asked to me about down in the Eldersburg area, Comcast is the, you know, largest vendor. Are there opportunities for other vendors to come into the...
Yes, and there was actually one other vendor who put in for a state grant that was not awarded a grant, was Tawke, has an interest in moving into Maryland. They did receive an ARDOF grant, Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, grant for the northern portion of Carroll County. Unfortunately, they, it's only about $200,000 a year for five years, but they have expressed an interest in, here in the county. Anybody can come in and build, it's just a matter of, I guess they're looking for their return on investment to make it worthwhile for them to do. And with the funding that we have, we're, I mean, at this point, we're getting another fifteen hundred homes connected with our ten million, hopefully we'll get another thousand connected, but there's still, even with that estimate, we're still going to have probably 2,000, 2,200 homes that aren't on the grid yet.
Right. Okay.
So, and the federal government's, I mean, I, the other thing I would suspect, and this is just a guess on my part, but based on what the federal government's been talking about and what we hear, I think that these grant opportunities are going to continue to happen. While we only have four right now, I think the federal government is going to continue to be releasing additional grants to continue this.
Okay.
Which might be important too, because this grant will end, you know, so we have all of our money, and we can't get fiber, and we can't complete the builds by the end of the grant period. We want some of the grants that will extend beyond twenty-six to allow us to continue those builds.
Yeah, having the, the lead time on fiber, that's, that's scary, you know, having, you know, but as long as it's not in cargo ships in the Pacific Ocean, and it's just manufacturing, you know, here in the states, at least we have more control over it, but wow.
So, and like other things, I think over time, as they continue to get the, you know, the pressure will come down, and we'll be able to get it sooner than.
Okay.
And our vendors are very good. They have, they've already, all of them have already been working on this and placing the orders and that type of thing to get this moving forward. So it's not like people have been waiting for us to tell them to do anything. They're already in the process, the orders have been placed, and...
Yeah.
So, let's move on then to municipal water requests. So the first piece of this is that the board asked to see an overview of how the municipalities were allocating their FRF funding. The list is not complete, because not every municipality has allocated all their funding yet, but you'll see the theme, the, you know, more than half of the money right now is allocated to water and sewer. And both Mount Air, or about Hampstead anticipates that the majority of their allocation will also go to water and sewer. Some other uses, you know, a variety of other uses, and then the three projects that are eligible for our municipal water allocation. So I won't go through the table, do you have any questions, though, about this?
What is, what is the lost revenue mean for Westminster?
So, lost revenue, that, we took the lost revenue here at the county, it allows you, every, everyone who received the FRF grant could claim ten mil, up to ten million in lost revenue, and you can use it for general government purposes. So it gives you more flexibility in how you can use the funding. We did that, although we didn't allocate it to that, it does give us flexibility, and I was a little surprised that not more of the municipalities elected lost revenue and just took it as a, you could use it much more flexibly.
Yeah, I was saying the same thing.
I'm a little surprised, but...
Why didn't they, was it just not educated in doing it, or...
Well, if you're going to do it, if you're going to do water and sewer, I mean, you still have to follow federal procurement, whether you categorize it as lost revenue or as a eligible FRF project. So if you were going to do water and sewer projects, it really didn't make very much difference.
Hmm, okay.
But the theme is water and sewer. The majority, even without all the money fully allocated, more than half of the municipal allocations are going to water and sewer projects at this point.
Since the municipalities are getting their money through the state, have they received their second?
I'm not sure. You received the second tranche one year after the first, and I know there were delays, because they needed to certify budgets, and there were some additional hoops that municipalities had to jump through. So we just got our second allocation, or second tranche last month, so it may be a little bit more time before they get there and have it in their bank accounts.
What is Mount Air's other uses?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember. I can certainly look at that and provide that for you.
Thank you.
So the water projects that are eligible for the money that we're going to be cooperating with the municipalities for is on that last list right there?
Correct.
And it's, go ahead.
We'll look at that on the next slide. I've got the list of projects, and there were some changes.
I'm just prompting you forward.
Yes, I know. It's really working well.
We're just trying to say we're going to move forward.
I was thinking this morning, this might be the last time I present on FRF, and now I've gotten pretty good at it. All right, so if we're ready, that is the next slide, that'll show you all the projects that were eligible, and there were some shifts in the last time you saw it, so I want to talk to you about that. Okay. Okay, so, this is a list of all the requests that you received for municipal water projects. You had asked for water projects, just to refresh your memory, water projects, yeah, water that was FRF eligible, and originally, we had three million dollars allocated to this, to this effort. In March, because you had increased need for the Ag Center Parking Lot project, and you had an additional request for the Behavioral Health RFP, we moved some of the money from municipal water and reduced that to 2.2 million. Now, after the presentation to you in March, Westminster reached out to me, we met with them, and they provided additional information about their water project. Given that additional information, I believe that it is eligible for FRF. Originally, it was not in that category, so that one moved into the eligible category. New Windsor, in the meantime, received all the funding that they needed for their water main project from the state, so they withdrew their request to our, to our pot of money. I took the time to reach out also to the rest of the municipalities and talk to them about our decisions. In light of Westminster giving me additional information, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood how we, how we made the decisions. No other projects changed. So now you have three that are eligible, Westminster's Pure Water Project, Manchester and Union Bridge Water Main Projects, and they were originally eligible when we met in March. So right now, we have 3.6 in recommended projects, and you have 2.2 million in that line right now. So you have any questions about what is eligible and what the list looks like right now?
So, not about what is eligible, I got all that, is there any way to...
Let's go to the next slide.
Okay.
We're going to let him ask the question.
Next slide, please.
Next slide.
Thank you. Okay, so this is where you stand. We have 3.6 and some change in requests, and then allocated to just over 2.2. So we're overspend in that category by 1.4 million. So just to spark your discussion, I have a couple of suggestions or options. You could reallocate some of the broadband funding. That is, it's a pot that we haven't, we haven't spent yet, and we haven't put out to RFP. If we did that, if we moved 1.4 million from broadband to municipal water, we could fund the three that are eligible. That would mean that you have still allocated half of the FRF money to broadband, with a total commitment of almost thirty million dollars between the state grants and our funding, with the four opportunities that are still pending. Another idea is to allocate it proportionally. We have about sixty percent of the money that you need, and we could just reduce everybody's and give them sixty percent of the funding that they requested. I mean, we could do it a million different ways. These are just two ideas to spark discussion about how you want to handle these requests.
I wouldn't take anything away from the broadband requirements. I mean, we saw that was such a need, I mean, it's been a need forever, and this pandemic just highlighted it as such a, you know, requirement that, you know, I think every dollar we can afford, especially if there's expectations. I mean, that's my two cents, you know, about it, but that's just me.
Yeah, I have to agree. I don't actually want to take any money with broadband. I know Mark's happy about that, but, because I do think it is an urgent need in this county. For the people that are not served by broadband are, you know, emailing, texting Commissioner Wanson on, and I appreciate you texting him, but I understand that, and I think we need to do the best we can to push bar, you know, broadband as much. And I actually, I do like the second option at the sixty percent level, because everybody gets something. They don't get everything they asked for, but they certainly get some money from us to help move those projects forward. I know Commissioner Weaver loves that second one, don't you, Commissioner?
Any other thoughts? I mean, well...
It's all important, but...
You hear me say it, do you?
Yeah.
You know how I feel.
I mean, we have to get broadband out there, and we're the only way they're going to get it.
Yeah.
I mean, the county is the only way it's going to go out into the northern part of the county.
Yep.
Wow, it's a tough one.
Well...
Yeah.
Do you have a staff recommended motion, if you just...
Okay, well, give, give...
No, I mean, when you're ready.
Just a sec. Yeah, I mean, you're, I mean, black and white.
I can't take a dollar from broadband, I just can't. It's, it's too, it's so volatile, and it's something that is so necessary, and I'm just, I'm just tired of the constant delays. Well, we can't do that, because it's, you know, it's, and I understand that, but it's just, it's exhausting. These folks need broadband, and they need it yesterday, so I can't take anything from that.
Are we getting a program manager still? Are we hiring somebody to focus full attention on the broadband requirements? I mean, Mark, you're...
We posted that position previously, and we did not get any candidates, so we put it on hold until we, any qualified candidates for that. So I started looking at some other options. We could post it again and see if we get anybody this time to take the position, but I've also had conversations with several different companies that have started to do that as part of their operations, and we could put out an RFP to them, to ask them to help us provide some management on there. I think the big thing is going to be what you raised earlier, is just the number of people calling in with questions is going to take, you know, a majority of the time as we start to move this forward and begin the process.
Does it have to be full-time?
No.
Well, that's the other question. I mean, right now, you know, we've got twelve million dollars allocated for fiber builds in the county. We've never had that kind of position before. But I can imagine, and the other thing that Debbie talked about is we could take the money for that position from the $10 million shortfall that they allocated, and that would allow this person then to make it a full-time position to actually deal with all of the fiber issues in the county, not just the fiber issues for the grant itself.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I had a conversation with an individual the other day that retired from IT, from the IT industry. And, you know, he suggested to me, if there's ever anything, but he said, "I don't really want to work full-time, but, you know, I've got the expertise, and I've worked in private sector, I've worked in public sector." And I'm thinking, geez, what a great guy to plug into something, but there's a lot of folks out there that don't want nine to five, five days a week. So maybe we should be a little bit more flexible with plugging somebody in and not just doing it the way we've always done it. Here's the job posting. You work Monday to Friday. Maybe we should be thinking outside of the fiber a little bit.
Right, and we can have those discussions. One of the big things that this person would be doing, and I know from experience that this can be a full-time job, is we need a liaison to be able to deal with BGE, with Verizon, with the pole attachments, with making sure everything's the way that it's supposed to be. And unfortunately, that's nine-to-five work. That's when BGE and Verizon...
You get the right person, I think they could plug it in in the right way. I'm just suggesting a different way in order to get somebody on board, because it's taking away from your responsibilities to do this. Not, you're doing a tremendous job with it, Mark, but if somebody there was focused just on this...
I agree.
Absolutely agree.
So maybe that's a way to look at it. Get somebody in that's...
Yeah, no, I 100% agree. And I'm gonna share with you a company that I want you to look at, and that's Hartman Executive Advisors.
Okay.
I am not affiliated with them, but I have known them for quite some time, and they do strategic and IT consulting. They just won a bid, I believe, down in North Carolina with a county, and they are working with other counties across the country.
Okay.
So, reach out to them. I can give you their points of contact and their business development people. But if it's them, that's fine. I don't really care. But I think it's that type of approach that can take on this type of role.
And that's the advantage to have, one of the advantages to doing a company as opposed to an individual, is all the experience the company has rather than just the experience of one individual.
Just to let you know, it's...
Now, we will have to put out an RFP for this under the federal requirements.
Of course, but I'm just saying, what I want you to do is take a look at, it's not gonna say contact them, but take a look at their skill set.
Sure.
And if that's the skill set, that is a, that is, you know, what you're looking for, then you can look at an RFP saying, "Yeah, that's the type of work that's necessary." But, you know, yeah, I'm not saying sole source anything, I'm not saying go to, but I'm saying, look at who they are, and what you just described fits them to a T, so, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, my recommendation is that we go with option one, you know, unless you want to...
What, you mean two?
Option two, excuse me. Option two, unless there's any other issues. I mean, did you have a staff recommendation you want to make?
That's it. I mean, no, it's not that. It's just, if you want to read the motion, it's just partial.
I'll make the motion, Board of County Commissioners direct staff to move forward with the municipal water projects with partial funding.
I'll second. Any other discussion on this? Really good layout, really good discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What else we want to talk about?
Commissioner Boucher didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Against.
You're against?
Yes, sir.
Four-one, okay.
Wait. Four-one, you, you...
He's against.
Oh, against?
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right. Okay. What else we want to talk about?
That's it.
Are you gonna give us updates periodically? I mean, we're only here for another six months, but...
I was teasing when I, yes, I'm sure that I'll come back.
With these tendings and the design phases and, you know...
Yes, we can...
...started, blah, blah, blah. I'd like to get at least, especially when it comes to broadband, I'd like to get weekly, but I'll be a little bit more realistic and say monthly, but...
Would you would like, you would like us to come back monthly with a status report?
I think it's important to come back monthly with these projects. I mean, it is, it's a chunk of change, and it's garnered a lot of conversation from all four corners of the county, and the continuous updates until the next bunch that comes in might not care, but I think this bunch does. So I'd like to hear monthly's if you can.
On all projects?
On all the projects.
Yep, okay.
Just to give us an update on where, you know, where they are, including the municipalities that are using the money, you know, how are they doing? Just a simple, hey, what's going on, you know? That would be great.
Yeah, transparency and communications is huge, knowing what the county's doing, but what the municipalities have received, and where they lie their priorities, and then we can work together and say, okay, this is how we can either provide resources or, you know, understand, so we're not conflicted. I mean, that, that is important. Yeah, monthly or as needed, well, monthly and/or as needed type of...
We'll start with monthly, and then...
That's great.
That'd be good. Thanks.
And Commissioners, Commissioner Wance has been doing this for quite a while. If you have any requests from citizens, please feel free to forward them to me, because myself and Carol Schauver, we don't just answer their question on whether or not they're in the list. We actually work with them to see if there may be other possibilities that would allow them to get a connection, so...
And you do a very good, you, both you and Carol, even though Carol says, "Oh, Wance", again, you both do a great job of outreach and, you know, providing that opportunity. So, yeah, you know, I've got, I've got two that came across my desk yesterday afternoon again, and I'll throw them out again. But, you know, as the anticipation grows and people see, that's another reason why I want to see these monthly updates, because as people see these things, they're like, well, wait, wait, what about me? Where am I? And I've got at least four roads right now that are in that category of, wait, what about me? And two of those roads are, I can see the box, it's right there, and it's just, it's getting exhausting, so...
Well, and I would hope that when we come back, too, we will know more about what the state, the next grants that the state will release. So we'll also give you updates on any future grants for broadband and where we're at with those.
Because a couple of those dates are the end of July for, you know, application, so they should be issuing what you're applying for.
And we would come before you when we apply, but, you know, we can give you updates as we see those opportunities, because one is for middle mile, one is for connectiveness, and Cory is certainly, you know, much more in tune with what those grants are offering, but some are for those very difficult, long, last-mile connections. So they are anticipating some of what we're going to need.
Okay.
Cory, just for the record, is there internet in your area?
Yes.
Okay. You don't have to go any further. I just, I was curious, because I know, you know that I know where you are, and...
It is now, just recently.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Boucher, did you want to share any of your opinions, or no?
I'm glad you listened intently to what I had to say.
I just wanted to state that water is vital to life, broadband is not, and that's basically how I came down to that conclusion. They're both very vital, but if you need to separate your priorities, I think water is the biggest priority. And that's it.
Let's talk about Springdale. Jack? Jack? Let's talk about Springdale?
He's not coming up.
No? You don't want to come up? Talk about the tank, or... What are we doing up there?
Good morning, Commissioners. We're here today to ask your approval to award a contract to Subsurface Technologies Incorporated for the replacement relocation of a heating and oil tank at the Springdale Preparatorial School in the amount of $227,000. The amount is within the adopted budget, and no additional funds will be necessary. The bid was advertised on March 4th. The Office of Acurement received two bids that are listed below, with Subsurface Technologies being, coming in at the lowest bid and being the most responsive and responsible.
Morning, Commissioners. We're here today for a decision to award Subsurface Technologies the contract to replace the, and relocate the heating oil tank on the property of the old New Windsor Middle School. This will be a joint effort between the Bureau of Facilities and Economic Development. The Maryland Department of Environment conducted a routine heating oil audit on the property. It found the property in violation of the COMAR, which is Code of Maryland Regulations for MDE. The issue was related to the 27-year-old 10,000-gallon underground oil storage tank used when the school was built. As the owner of the property, the county is obligated to make the necessary repairs. The current underground 10,000-gallon heating oil tank supplies fuel to the facility. With the new regulations and continued ongoing inspections, we feel it's the county's best interest to get this 27-year-old tank out of the ground, remove it above ground, and replace it with a 6,000-gallon tank, which will follow the 22 COMAR regulations per What questions do you have regarding this?
The main question I have is, why are we paying 100% of this? I mean, we're, I just, you know, it's a long history, but the school, we're supposed to sell it and all this other stuff, and now it's being leased, and I, we all worked on that and agreed to it, but now anything that comes up, we're responsible for? And I realize it's COMAR, but we can't work out some agreement with at least a 50-50, split on the cost or something of that sort? I mean, it just seems more realistic to me.
It feels like a sucking chest wound, you know? Like we're in a swamp.
Well, I guess for me, it begs the question of what in the world's going on at Springdale Prep?
I can't answer that.
You're not, no, 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 that's okay, and you're not prepared to say.
I mean, it's just, it's ongoing. You know, we're renewing the lease, we're doing this, we're doing that. I mean, I don't, I don't, I understand we have to do this.
Right.
So that's the first question, what's going on at Springdale Prep? And Jack, that's a question for you. And number two, I guess for me, is, well, maybe start with that one, but I just, I agree that maybe there should be some sort of a share process here. I don't know. I mean, is the anticipation that they're gonna continue to function up there? I mean, are they at, how many kids do we have there? I don't know. I want to make sure the facility doesn't go downhill and sits there and, you know, is not viable at all. We need to keep it viable. In the event that they don't...
It's gonna fall back on us, and that's why I think it's in best interest for us to fix this correctly now, or it's gonna come back and haunt us later.
I mean, I agree, it has to be fixed. I'm not saying that at all. I do agree it has to be fixed and it should be fixed. I just don't agree that we should spend 100% of the money. We should pay 100%, I just don't think it's right.
What are your thoughts, Jack?
Springdale is waiting for us. We're holding us up the lease. They do not have a lease with us. They've been paying month-to-month. We did raise the rent to cover this tank. We were told, I was told, that it was gonna be about $85,000 to $100,000. We raised the rent to pay for that $85,000 to $100,000. We did not do it for 200, you know, $30-some thousand dollars. They're very optimistic now that they're gonna get more students coming over from China, Japan, Vietnam, and Brazil, that they will have international students. They've hired a new president that replaced Johnny or replaced, you know, Ashley. So I think the school is, from what I, what they told me, the school's gonna be, you know, be a viable source. They have, the lease is for three years, and they are paying the rent, and there are increases in that rent. We increased them substantially last time, you know, you told me to increase it to pay for that. But this, this came up, we have to do this, the MDE, we're in violation. But Commissioner, you know, it's, they're paying the rent, the student is, the numbers are going up for them. They have, they have 34 active full-time teachers there, or full-time employees there. So, so... They're really waiting for us to make this decision to sign the lease.
Okay.
But they're ready to sign. We've, Tim and I have been negotiating with the attorney. The last we got back, they've met all our stipulations in the lease except for this. Because if you remember way back when, I don't know, five, six years ago, we said this was one of the things we would do, we would replace the tank. And then we found out we're in violation.
Right, I do remember that. Well, that, you've answered that question, and I appreciate that. And I guess my, my second question was, within the adopted budget, where, you know, I didn't know we had an adopted budget for that facility, but apparently we do. Beyond the lease monies that come in, do we have money set aside in your department that handles maintenance up?
We don't handle the maintenance, no.
So we're not doing anything up there at all?
They're doing, the leases, they would, 100% of all maintenance, they're maintaining the fields also, cutting the grass, doing the snow.
We're not milling grass at all?
That's correct.
They're doing, they're doing everything in there, everything in the school. It's a full lease, they're taking care of everything. They're paying all the utility bills and everything else. We're not doing anything.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So when they take this tank out and put the new tank in, hooking the new tank up is part of this, part of the deal?
That is correct.
Okay, we're not gonna have to send our guys in there to, to whatever?
No, no. It's all gonna be contracted out, and Jack's did mention the pricing did go up a little bit. I mean, we could've went in there, Commissioners, and just replaced the top tank replacement, but in the long run, we still have a 27-year-old tank underground that we're still gonna need to maintain and inspect. So that's why I feel, and my department feels it's best interest to get this out of the ground, so we eliminate anything underground that could cause issues, get it above ground, and bring it up to today's standards.
Let's be clear, for me, it's a no-brainer. We gotta replace the tank.
Right.
What I'm most concerned about is the process of getting to that point, which seems like we're in the mud.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we put it in four-wheel drive, but we ain't getting nowhere. So financially, fiscally, looking at it from a fiscal standpoint, so...
Yeah, I was walking up the hall, so I don't know what got said as I was coming here, but you asked, you said something about, I didn't know this was budgeted. It was not budgeted. We are gonna fund this. There is money remaining economic development infrastructure budget. We will be moving money from there to facilities to pay for this.
The $850,000, which you put in the infrastructure fund, this year, we had, the transfer was about 200, I think, $230,000. So it would cover this, taken out of our infrastructure fund at the 850 that you, that you gave.
I find that to be a little wonky, too.
I don't like, I don't like that part.
Well, if we agree that we have to pay for it, then we have to find someplace to pay for it.
Find it somewhere. I got that, yeah. It just seems like we're, I don't know. Where does the, where does the money that we get from their monthly, they're paying monthly, is that correct? Or annually?
That's correct. They're paying monthly, and they're...
Where does that money go? Where does the, where does the monthly...
The general fund revenue, just like any other revenue.
So then why wouldn't we take the money out of the general fund?
Well, it is coming out of the general fund.
Okay, we just said it's coming out of their category, though.
But that's part of the general fund. I mean, there's, there's no separate general fund, it's all the general fund.
Very detailed on the category. Got it. They do have to pay to fill those tanks, right?
Oh, yeah.
We don't...
Yeah, we don't pay any fuel, we don't pay any heating cost.
It's probably more than putting the tank in.
You say this?
I think, you know, obviously, with all these questions, a comfort level would be to come back, you know, periodically.
End of the, oh, this is...
Go ahead.
This is the end of the fiscal year today, so that's... I think, you know, obviously, with all these questions, a comfort level would be to come back, you know, periodically.
End of the, oh, this is...
Go ahead.
This is the end of the fiscal year today, so that's...
I'm talking about Springdale.
I know where you're going.
I'm just to know what the status is of Springdale as they continue to move forward, because, you know, we want to see it succeed. And a decision was made to transfer or transition this into this school, so we, we want to see it succeed. And the best way is for us to have that visibility, I believe, so, so let's plan on doing that maybe in a month or so, say, hey, here's the latest with the new leadership and the numbers. Okay?
Yeah, that would be good. We do want it to succeed, because if not, it's shades of eight years ago when we had three schools thrown in our laps. It's your district. So, you got any, you got two cents to add?
Yeah, I was waiting until the rest of the conversation was done. You mentioned that they maintain the fields, or are rec councils utilizing the fields they're maintaining?
Rec councils not using those fields over there, just Springdale Prep.
Just Springdale Prep, okay. I thought maybe that was a benefit of picking up, they maintain the fields, but are rec councils going to utilize them, certainly not.
From what I know, Commissioner, there could be some side, I don't know, but from my understanding, it's just Springdale Prep using those fields.
Okay. Does our councils have the ability to use them when...
That I'm not sure, Commissioner.
And the lease, and the lease states that they're not using the fields or the gym, that they would work with the rec councils?
Yeah, so we'll, we can get that update.
I don't know if that's happening or not.
I, I thought the rec councils were using the fields.
Same with myself, I thought same as Commissioner Ralstein. It'd be a nice neighborly thing to do to make it available and project some goodwill towards the county, because this whole deal with this school is a bad taste, I think, all over mouths, and as soon as possible, you like to get rid of it and settle the whole thing, because it seems to be an ongoing wound that's open. And each year that goes by, it seems like we accrue some other expense to maintain this thing.
Well, remember, they're paying all the expenses, the county's not paying any expenses for anything there.
We have a sale, or eventual sale on this.
The problem is COVID, they, you know, they couldn't get the visas from China or Japan coming over, and now it is loosening up, and they feel good about this fall coming in.
Well, it's good to be optimistic, I like to hear that.
Okay, so, first step is get the tank replaced. Second step, maybe in about a month or so, we'll get you on the schedule saying, just give us an update on what's going on with the school, okay? I appreciate it. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, for asking me to chime in. I move that to Board of Commissioners award a contract for heating oil tank replacement and relocation to Subsurface Technologies Inc. an amount of $227,000.
Second. Got a motion, got a second, any other discussion? Seen, heard none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Lyburne, nice suit. You look like a Mississippi attorney.
I'm dating with attorneys this afternoon, so they all wear these suits.
Yeah. The good piece about that discussion is we take the stewardship of our dollars very seriously.
Yes, thank you.
And that was an important discussion. Let's talk about the Saturday Services Pilot Program, ladies. And Doug, you want to come up? And Stacy, how many days?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. So thirty-six and a wake-up.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Pleased to be in front of you this morning. About two months ago, I started working with Stacy, and then, so Stacy Nash, our Transit Grants Manager, Crystal Weinbrenner, Executive Director of Ride with us, and I started working with the area about two months ago. We, we got involved in a lot of discussions and going to a lot of meetings, one of which, one of the good ideas that has come up, we want to bring before you today, and just would like for you to listen to us and ask any questions, and I'm going to turn it over to Stacy for the meat and potatoes here.
All right, good morning.
I'm going to get hungry.
It's almost lunchtime, it's fine. I'm here with Crystal, Executive Director of Ride with us, and we are here to talk to you today about a transit pilot for Saturday services. As long as I have been in this position, and I'm going to assume longer, but we're going to refer to her on that, we have been asked about running some sort of Saturday service. And most recently, during our transit talk on June 8th, it was brought up again there. Over the years, we've had different Saturday services. For a while, we ran the Westminster Trailblazer on Saturdays, but the ridership was almost non-existent, so we discontinued it. We more recently had an on-demand option from 7:00 to 1:00 on Saturdays, was reservation-based, advanced reservation only, we didn't do same-day, but again, low ridership. So we would like to present a new option to you today that we believe will give us the best representation of the need. This pilot would begin Saturday, August 6th, which is conveniently 37 days from now, and run through Saturday, October 29th, during the hours of 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. If you give us the green light, we're going to spend all of July to market. A lot of our pilots, I think, haven't had enough push to really give us what they should, so we're going to use all of July to push it out. Social media, press releases, we're going to advertise on the buses, and we're going to work with our allied agencies who have been asking us for this Saturday service to push it out to their clients. This would be countywide, countywide demand response service, so reservations would be required and based on availability, but same-day would be an option if the availability was there. We would follow the current contract terms with our contractor for the hourly rate, and the expenses would be covered by my CARES grant. We plan to base the success or failure of such a service on the demand response cost per passenger trip, and if it is comparable to the current weekday costs per passenger trip. Right now, it is about $35 per passenger trip. It might be different during that time period, but that's what it is right now. If we decide, if it's deemed that the service is to continue, we'll come back in front of you and talk about some funding options and how that would look, or we'll be back on why we think this service should not be continued, whether we don't have ridership or whatever that case may be. We'll probably come back towards the end of the period, October 20th-ish, give or take, just to give you an idea of where that is and what we think we should do going forward. So I think that is everything I have. If I missed anything important, I'm going to turn it over to Crystal. If not, we'll take questions.
You said $35.
Mm-hmm.
That's 35, say that one more time, define that $35?
$35 per passenger trip. So the cost to the county is $35 for a trip, just one way, for someone to get on the bus.
We would be...
That does not include their fare, I mean, their fares come out of that, obviously, but...
Yeah, but $35 one-way, so $70 round-trip. That's a lot of money.
Transit doesn't pay for itself. It does not.
So, yeah, so, so I'm just, I apologize, just real...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Finish this train of thought, and I appreciate you saying that, because I'm looking at what is the return on investment? Because that's a lot of money. I mean, what if we gave people vouchers for Uber?
Yeah, that was my idea, too.
It'd be, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not against, you know, internal intra-public transportation, and I like to support it, but I didn't realize that it was like, that's a lot of money. Wow.
This is the demand response service, that is a little more expensive than our Trailblazers. Our Trailblazer cost per passenger trip is, is, depends on the route. Our Westminster route is about $15 per, per person, per passenger trip, which is our best running route.
And that's each way?
Correct.
Starting tomorrow, it's $15.07 next to the state. My only question is, you tried this and it was strike one, then you tried it and it's strike two, what gives you the confidence that you're not going to get to strike three?
So, we actually have not had Saturday service in this way before. One of the services we offered was a Trailblazer service, and it was not utilized very well. And I...
Which means that you just waited for the bus and if it came by, you got on.
Right, so the bus just went the same fixed route, which has its, you know, positives and negatives, and a negative is it obviously doesn't go everywhere a person may need to go on a Saturday. And we didn't offer, you know, we don't have same-day deviations, so even if someone wanted to go off the route, they couldn't make that, that stop. Our second iteration of that was very poorly implemented, and where we offered Saturday service from 7:00 to 1:00, we didn't advertise it very well, and in addition to that, if there were not enough people to go, then we weren't bringing a driver and a dispatcher in, because it didn't make sense. That is, that would not be the case this time. This time, we would just be open from 9:00 to 4:00, and we would take same-day reservation, we would run it the same way we do Monday through Friday. And the purpose of this is not just to add service, but it seems like the biggest community concern when we have these public meetings and outreach is that we don't have Saturday service. So the only way, as, at our transit talk, we talked to agencies and explained to them, the only way we can prove that need is if you actually give us the data. So this three-month pilot will allow us that time to first give us 30 days to really push and market this, especially with the agencies that say they need it most, and then we'll give us a three-month period of time to prove whether or not that's true. So at the end of that three months, if we're really seeing a lot of people call, then perhaps we can extend the pilot and see how that goes. And if not, then the next time we have a community meeting where there's this outcry for Saturday service, we can say, listen, these are all the things that we've done, and clearly the evidence is not there.
Yeah, that's good. I like that, I like that last part, Crystal. Nicely done.
Yeah.
Because really, if they, you know, they, they, they need to know if it, and if it's just one agency, then they should take care of their own. I hate to be that way, but it's expensive, and it's, it's not going to get any cheaper.
And I think it's easy for, for people to have a client, a particular client that has this one need, to generalize it as if we only had this community-wide, and we saw that with our evening pilot program as well, that was, we didn't have anyone turn out despite the outcry for needing evening service. So I think that, I do think in both cases, both evening and Saturday, we did a very poor job of marketing. I think our transit talk was very positive, and we had a really, really good discussion, and I think of the agencies that showed they understand what their part in this is to get people, you know, on the bus, and they also understand that if they aren't able to do that, then we can't prove that they need the service. So I think we're in a really good place to push this 30-day marketing strategy to get three months going.
Do you have a budget for this setup?
It would, it would come from, as Stacy mentioned earlier, the, the current CARES, CARES funding, the current CARES grant opportunity.
And will you anticipate this will cost to run for three months?
Honestly, I, we haven't put a budget on it. I mean, I have the funding, we have CARES funding that we can use for all operating, so I know it'll be covered, but without having really any idea. I mean, we have multiple agencies telling us that they want it, but, I mean, we've had the service before and they haven't used it, so somewhere between one and 15 people a day.
And the cost to a rider is how much, then?
Well, it would be based on our normal fares, so it would be mileage-based, from $4 to $9, depending on how far you're going one way, just like our normal demand response services.
So to put the exact number on the pilot, just to emphasize that, is difficult unless we know the amount of riders, because we aren't only paying if we have the rider. So if we, if we don't have anyone in the seat, then it, there's no cost. If we put a butt in the seat, then we have, we have that cost. So again, if it, if we, if what we are hearing from community members about not offering a Saturday service is true, and we put 10 people on a bus, then that's simple math, at 10 times $70 per Saturday, you know, that's, that's where we're at. But if not, if it's less than that, then the cost would be less. So the, the whole purpose here is, you're right, we do get a lot of concerns from the community, from our customers, and we simply want to be able to be data-driven and say, look, we checked that out, that doesn't work, or does work, and here's what we can do beyond that.
And a good thing about this, I believe, is that this is going to be on-demand.
Yes.
So you're not going to have a Trailblazer running around the route with no one on it all day long, especially with the cost of fuel today, that's a big advantage on-demand. Second thing is, actually, this won't cost the county any money at all, because it comes from the CARES funding for the pilot program, so it doesn't come out of our funding at all. So this would be the best time to do this. It's not, you know, you got the CARES money to use, why not use it? Why not get the data? Let's find out what's going on with this, and then we can move ahead with it, or not move ahead with it. But I like the idea, it's on-demand, so you don't have, the bus isn't running unless there's someone to, to ride on the bus. So, you know, and it's really, and it is taxpayer money, but it's not costing us.
It also affords us the opportunity to collect the right data, so we'll know if there's people in Eldersburg that want it on Saturday, we'll know that.
That's the selling point, right there.
Right, and with our evening pilot, we did a five-mile radius from Westminster, so it was not open to the county. And with our Trailblazer, obviously, very fixed, you know, a two-mile route, so it's just not open to everyone. And we can also then target, if we just, if we find in these three months that the only people that are riding it is Eldersburg, we could then have a Saturday option just in Eldersburg, so it wouldn't be a countywide going forward, or something like that, like we can tailor what the service would be once we have the data.
I mean, the biggest issue to me is being good stewards of our taxpayer money, and subsidizing appropriately, I mean, we, we look at it, and there, we subsidize different things all over the place, but we have to be very careful. I understand that there's CARES money, but it's not free money, you know, it's money with a purpose. The vehicles that will be used, will they be the buses?
Yes.
Do we have vans?
It'll be our smaller vehicles.
So it'll be a smaller, it'll be designed to be small.
But it will also still be wheelchair-equipped, so we, we will still be able to offer the service to everyone.
Because that's who I would figure would be using this, are elderly, going to doctor visits, you know...
Dialysis is a very, very big component.
릿inal dialysis is huge, you know, so getting people to, the visits, to get their dialysis. Yeah, that's kind of what's in my mind, is how they would be used, and the, the challenge when it's on-call like this is, when somebody picks up the phone and says, hey, I need a ride, and I imagine this will be part of your marketing, that if you're calling, the expectation should be 30 minutes, 45 minutes, an hour, whatever it may be, from...
Well, so it wouldn't be, I mean, if you're calling same-day, it would be what's available. So if the bus is in Eldersburg and you're calling from Hampstead and you want the bus now, we're just going to, we're not going to be able to provide that ride at that moment. We might be able to do it later in the day, but right then, we can't. But if you reserve it in advance, like we do normal demand response, any other time, you know, up to two weeks ahead, then we can schedule the bus around where it needs to be accordingly. And then if we cannot provide the ride, if we're, if we're denying the ride because the bus is not available because it's full that day, we're going to also keep track of those denials, so that we have that data for going forward.
The, the last question for me is, do you believe the pilot program three months is long enough, or should it be a six-month through the end of the...
I think three months is a good start. I think, you know, we're going to come back towards the end of it to you guys, and if we see a big uptick in the last three weeks of the pilot, then we'll probably ask you to extend it to those other three months, just to see how it goes. If not, you know, we'll, we'll have some options.
And, and the reason, just because the latter months, you know, is winter time, it's harder for people to get out of their driveways, and especially elderly, don't want to drive in, in climate weather, and they would use more, I would think, mass transportation, especially to dialysis and other scheduled care, you know, throughout the weekends.
Our ridership does typically decrease in the winter, just in general.
Yeah, I, I understand.
I mean, I, I agree, maybe during...
It, it all depends also, marketing, so, okay.
My only reservation with that is, we're the ones that are allowing you to do the pilot program, and if you do it for six months, we don't have the ability to say, we agree with you with your statistics, because we ain't going to be here.
That's true.
So I'd really like to keep it to the three months.
Okay.
And that's the whole point of, of, you know, the, the one thing with pilots, and that's the big discussion that we have, beginning, purpose, purpose-driven, beginning, end, data collection, and then coming back to you. If at the end of that time, you decide you want to do more based on the data, or that's it, that will be your decision, so.
How many buses are you running a day, you think?
On Saturday? Just one.
Just one?
Yes, the, the whole purpose of this is simply data collection to know, to either put to rest or move forward, so we're going to do one.
You have drivers?
Yes. One driver. One driver, and I have one dispatcher.
And that dispatcher will be able to cover the on-call?
Mm-hmm.
So you wouldn't have to add another dispatcher?
No.
Correct, no additional.
We're not adding staff at all.
Right. Okay. Any other, it was a good discussion, it was a good question, and I, I agree, three months is good, I just want to hear whether it was three or six, and hear our ideas.
Weinberg, thanks for being here today. Are you having issues hiring drivers like everyone else seems to be having employment issues?
We are, but it's getting better, a lot better.
More applicants?
We are getting a lot more applicants. We started advertising on the back of our own buses, and we've had a lot of people come in doing that, so we've, we're still looking for probably 10 to 15 part-time applicants, but we, we're running pretty, pretty well right now.
Do you get a lot of retirees looking for, that's what I thought. Do you get a lot of retirees looking for, that's what I thought.
Almost ninety-five percent of our applicants, yes.
Is a good part-time employment for retirees. Thank you.
You're welcome.
A lot more accidents, people driving with their knees writing down the phone number that they see on the back of the bus. Okay, good ideas, I appreciate it. Any other conversation, discussion?
I'll make the motion that the Commissioners approve Department of Public Works' Carol Transit System to conduct the Saturday Services Pilot Program from August first, twenty twenty-two, through October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, from nine AM to four PM.
Okay, I'll second that. Any questions, discussion?
Commissioners, I'm sorry, one point, I just noticed a typographical error. That should be October twenty-ninth, because that is the last Saturday that that would occur.
I'm not amending that motion.
Well, all right.
All right, amend it to the twenty-ninth.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second that amendment. Very difficult, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Okay, four, one. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your time.
Storm drain repairs. What's going on up in Westminster, Old Bachman Valley Road and Manor Drive?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Roads Operations requests your approval to use an existing term contract with Proshot Concrete Incorporated at the cost of thirty-seven thousand eighty dollars. This amount is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary. You guys, I'll turn it over to.
Mr. Cook, you're looking quite sharp today, thank you.
Thank you very much. This, um, this is a, um, a, Proshot is the, uh, concrete lining that, you know, because the pipe is deteriorated, so we need to bring this, um, deteriorated pipe into, into compliance. So we're, we, you know, utilizing this contractor to, to, uh, to line the bottom of this pipe to, to bring it back into compliance. So that's why we are coming for, in front of you today to, you know, get your approval on this project.
And this is much more cost-effective than tearing whole pipe out?
Yes, yes, it, it keeps the road open to traffic. You know, it doesn't have to close the road, and it, it can do it all in one day, so there, it, it.
Is this Proshot concrete waterproof?
Yes, yes.
Is it waterproof because it has an additive in it, or is because five thousand PSI?
It's the, it's the five thousand PSI.
I would not want to be the guys that crawl inside that tube, that, that is a rough-looking job.
It is, it's a tough one, it's a tough one to knees, it's a tough one to body. Takes a certain person to do that type of job.
Plus, there's probably snakes down in there too.
Kathy really didn't want you to bring that up.
I'll make the motion that we approve the repair of storm drains in Old Bachman Valleys, Road and Manor Drive to Proshot Concrete, Inc., in the amount of thirty-seven thousand eighty dollars.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion, you got a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's move on to blacktop purchase.
We're here to ask your approval to award a contract with CJ Miller in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. CJ Miller is one of our existing term contracts. This amount is within the fiscal year twenty-two budget and no additional funds will be necessary. This blacktop will be used to complete in-house projects. I'll turn it over to Mark to discuss those projects.
Yes, these, uh, this is a, uh, Robert Arthur Road was one that was chip sealed prior, and due to springheads in the area, the water has penetrated and deteriorated the area. So we thought it would be best to put asphalt on top of that area and seal it in that capacity, and then we'll eventually chip seal it in a, in a future, so.
That's a terrible spot right there, too.
It is, it's a, it's a wet area.
Yeah, you think maybe it needs more than just an overlay?
Well, because it's got the chip seal underneath it already, that gives it a little bit of something there to hold on to, so.
Because it seems like you guys have, I know a guy that just came into the room and knows it very well. I mean, I've hit it, I've hit it a couple of times, and I, I don't go that way now unless I want to throw a can or something into this individual's yard.
Yeah.
But, um, but, uh, it just seems like when you repair it, a week later, it's,
It does.
it's a mess.
Yes, and it was previously a gravel road, so it was, it kind of didn't help any, so. But we, we'll do the necessary drainage that we can, if we have to put under drain, we do, and then we can with this.
Okay, that was the only point in bringing it up, Jim, to make sure in, in, that maybe you should throw something else in there.
And that's, that's an ongoing battle with quite a few roads, you know, we do that, so.
Okay.
But that's, that's kind of what our intent is.
Okay.
The county's doing the work?
Yes, yes.
You just want to buy the asphalt, blacktop.
Okay.
And with the price going up daily or changing, you don't know what you're gonna, how much you're gonna get?
It's skyrocketing, actually.
Yeah.
Well, hurry up and get it. I make the motion that we approve your, uh, your roads to purchase blacktop from CJ Miller in the amount of eighty-five thousand for that project.
Second.
I got a motion, I think I got a couple of seconds, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Let's talk about the construction of Sykesville, Maryland, eight fifty-one, State Highway eight fifty-one, Main Street Water and Sewer Main Improvement Project. Lots of work happening.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning. Morning.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for the construction of the Sykesville, Maryland, eight fifty-one, Main Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements Project to Rivers Construction Group Limited of Jessup, Maryland, in the amount of one million seven hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars. This award was competitively bid, and two, we received two bids from two contractors, which are listed below, with Rivers Construction Group coming in at the lowest bid. If this amount is within the adopted budget, no additional funds will be necessary.
Gentlemen, as you just heard, two bids were submitted for this project. The low bid was consistent with the estimated cost, and we are comfortable that the bid reflects a fair value. That, that being said, be aware that the construction world does remain very volatile. There were more than eighty, uh, thirty separate downloads of the engineering drawings during the eight-week bidding process, and we only received the two bids as shown on the briefing paper. This project is relatively straightforward, and my thoughts regarding the small number of submitted bids lies with the supply issues and the unknowns of the water and sewer main pipe product. This is the third and final contract associated with the Sykesville Main Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements Project. This board previously approved contracts for engineering services to JMT in December of twenty twenty, and construction inspection services to, to Whitman Ruckhart in March of this year. The scope of work is, is as outlined in the briefing paper, and includes major water and sewer improvements along Main Street from the intersection with Spout Hill Road and Springfield Avenue, and continuing southward to the Sykesville Pumping Station. This project will, will require my staff's ongoing coordination and outreach with the town of Sykesville, as well as construction coordination with the state highway and their planned Springfield Avenue Storm Range Improvement Replacement Project, as well as our county's Springfield Avenue Water and Sewer Main Project, which is a topic of the next item coming up. Any questions for me?
I'm glad you said that last line, because that's, that was my question, okay. Um, so I'm looking forward to that next conversation. Uh, twice as much, I mean, what a difference.
The, the, I guess the, the good part of the answer is the low bid was very consistent with the engineers' costs as given. I think the, the second bidder may have seen something that was not there, or overestimated certain costs. If, if, if both of those prices were in the same realm, then there would be some major issues.
Yeah, okay.
Have we used Rivers Construction before?
We have not, they're, they're based out of.
We checked out their workings, everything's good, because, yeah, I'm also looking at the big difference in the price there. I'm thinking, I know you said it goes by what we thought, but that's a tremendous difference. Are they doing everything that they're supposed to be doing, and we're sure that it's going to be done properly?
Uh, once again, the, the, the low bid is consistent with the engineers' costs, as, as I'm confident. I, I think the issue is with the, with the second, the second bidder.
As long as you're confident.
And how's this tie into their Main Street renovation?
Uh, the, the Streetscape project?
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's pretty much been canceled by the state highway. They are moving forward with, um, storm drainage improvements on Springfield Avenue, which may, may be what you're thinking of, Commissioner.
Okay.
We are coordinating the, this project very closely with, with the state highway.
And they are gonna have conversations about Streetscape further on, but this is, this is absolutely the priority, is to get this road done. Um, this has supposed it falling apart into the ground, so. Um, I'm with the Board of Commissioners award a contract for the construction of Sykesville, Maryland, eight fifty-one, Main Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements Project to Rivers Construction Group, in the amount of one million seven hundred forty-seven, forty, one million seven hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars.
Second.
That motion got a second, any discussion on this? Seeing here, none all in favor?
Aye.
Lot of money. Okay, let's talk about construction of Sykesville, Maryland, eight fifty-one, Springfield Ave, Water and Sewer Main Improvement Project.
Commissioners, again, we're here to request your approval to award a contract for the construction of the Sykesville, Maryland, eight fifty-one, Springfield Avenue Water and Sewer Main Improvement Project to Rivers Construction Group Limited of Jessup, Maryland, in the amount of two hundred, two million two hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. This award will be made via an open and competitive bid process. We received two bids, which are summarized below. These, the two contractors that were listed, uh, Rivers did come in at the, as low bid and most responsible and responsive bidder, and this amount is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
Gentlemen, the, the information regarding this agenda item will be very similar to the previous item regarding Main Street. Uh, once again, two bids were submitted for the project by the same two contractors. In, in this instance, both bids were below the estimated cost of the project, and we are confident, once again, that the low bid does reflect a fair value. Once again, there were more than thirty separate downloads of the engineering drawings during the eight-week bidding process, and we, we only received the two bids as shown. Once again, the only rational explanation for this regards the volatile construction world and, and with the supply issues and the unknowns of the water and sewer main pipe product. This is the third and final contract associated with the Sykesville Springfield Avenue Water and Sewer Main Improvements Project. This board previously approved contract awards for engineering services to RK&amp;K in February of twenty twenty-one, and construction inspection services to, to Whitman Ruckhart in March of this year. If there are any questions regarding the structuring of this work, and the previous Main Street item is two separate but coinciding projects, as a reminder, it was the Bureau's intent to complete the Main Street project first, and then move on to Springfield Avenue. This approach had to be reassessed and changed when the state highway found funding for their storm drain improvement project. So, so, so we did separate them out as two separate projects. At, at, at that point in time, the Main Street engineering work was two to three months ahead of Springfield Avenue with JMT, and we also realized cost savings by using the same consulting firm that the state used, RK&amp;K, for their storm drainage improvement work. So, so, so we, we, the coordination effort was, was maximized by having the same consulting firm do, do both the water and sewer main project, as well as the storm drain. There were numerous conflicts that would have had to been worked out between two separate consulting firms. The scope of work is as outlined on the briefing paper, and includes major water and sewer improvements along Springfield Avenue from the intersection with Spout Hill and Main Street, and continuing eastward to Warfield Road. And, and again, this project will require my staff's ongoing coordination and outreach with the town of Sykesville, as well as construction coordination with the state highway and their planned Springfield Avenue Storm Range, uh, uh, Improvement Project. One of the major benefits of the county's two projects is that the low bidder on both of these projects is the same contractor, so our coordination will, will be straightforward. Any questions for me?
I'm with the Board of Commissioners award a contract for the construction of the Sykesville, Maryland, eight fifty-one, Springfield Avenue Water and Sewer Main Improvements Project to Rivers Construction Group, in the amount of two million two hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars.
Second.
I got a motion in a couple of seconds, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about the Main Street Water and Sewer Main Improvement Project, ten percent spending authority approval.
Gentlemen, two items ago during the award of the Main Street Construction Project conversation, you heard me speak about the volatile construction world that presently exists, and concerns with, with regards to pipe materials and abrupt price increases. And you heard the very similar things mentioned in item one today with respect to fiber optic. That, that same problem does exist in, in the, in the water and sewer main pipe world, too. In, in view of this, and as per the briefing paper, the Bureau is requesting a ten percent spending authority approval above the awarded contract value of the Sykesville Main Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements Project to allow construction activity to seamlessly continue in the event of escalating material costs or unforeseen circumstances beyond the control of the contractor with the approval and approve, with the review and approval by Bureau staff. Uh, the, the, the resolution nine five one two oh one five currently limits the Director of Public Works to a collective change order value of the lesser of either of one hundred thousand dollars or ten percent of the total contract award. With respect to the current construction climate and the volatile price increases, the Bureau is requesting a ten percent contingency value of one hundred seventy-four thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty cents be approved by the board. This is consistent with construction practices for larger scale projects like this Main Street project. The combined value of the awarded contract and this requested ten percent value is within the adopted budget, and no additional funds will be necessary. The Bureau has discussed this approach with the Office of Management and Budget, and has their approval as well, or has their support. And to summarize, your approval of this request would be a pre-authorization to spend up to the ten percent requested dollar value without reappearing, uh, uh, before the board in open session. Any change to, to the original construction contract would still be processed through budget and procurement as a formal change order. I would be required to appear before the board for, for board approval for any expenditure in excess of this in the event that the ten percent threshold value is reached.
Have we, have we done this before? We're setting a precedent, and it's a pretty significant precedent with the ten percent, I mean, just in the cost itself. You know, we have a responsibility, not that I don't have complete and total faith in you and our team, but we just have to, if we're going forward with this, understand the precedent that we're setting, you know, in allowing this. And, and, and that's okay, I'm just, but it, it's significant.
I think the precedent is not the ten percent, the precedent is the amount, because it was ten percent or a hundred thousand dollars, whichever was less. So this is, this is still ten percent, but you, you realize it's going to be over the hundred thousand dollars, that's the only difference.
So we've allowed ten percent prior, if it was a hundred thousand dollars less?
Sorry, I don't understand your question.
We've allowed, um, directors to, you know.
Directors do not need to come before you if it's under a hundred thousand.
If it's under a hundred thousand.
Or ten percent if, if the project's not over a million dollars.
Right, right, so, so the precedent really is going above the hundred thousand.
Right.
Mark.
Yeah, and getting pre-approval for it. The concern is the timing, and it's happened before where they've actually had to, staff have actually had to authorize change orders because it would cost you, you know, the county way more, and then they run into open session as soon as possible, um, after that to get the, you know, post-approval, so they're just trying to avoid that.
Well, understanding, again, I'm, I'm not, I'm gonna recommend approval. I just want to make sure we all understand, at least I believe, that this is a change to a procedure that we have in place.
This makes it very easy to contractor just to bump some up, maybe not that ten percent, but a couple of extra percent on this without coming back. It, it's a very easy process, once this is approved.
That's, that's, that's part of what our staff does, is make sure that that's on point with our expectations and actually what they're requesting is legitimate.
Uh, for, for this contract, Commissioner Weaver, we, 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 we have approximately twenty-five to thirty items. It's not a, a blanket dollar amount, we are gonna be very cautious and careful with what we approve. My staff and I will absolutely, uh, review it with a fine tooth comb. It's not gonna be, uh, 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 free available money for the contractor, for lack of a better way of saying that.
I'm confident of that for this, but again, that's the, the precedent that we're going forward with, that if we allow it here, like you said, others may not necessarily just, well, they could take advantage of understanding that.
If, if I could say, um, the, uh, if that's, if that's gonna, if that will be the board's vote on this, and I'm not saying that it will be or not, please, uh, bear with me when I take on the responsibility of instructing the contractor to move forward on certain items rather than risk losing him from the, from the work site. There are gonna be, this is a very delicate project on a very old roadway in Sykesville. We're confident that the plans have been done very well, very nicely, but when we start opening the road up, there are unknowns that we are gonna likely get. And I can't afford to stop work with the town of Sykesville's anxiety over this project and everything else that we're working towards.
Right.
I think we have a fairly unique situation here with regard to this, and although we've never gotten this sort of pre-approval for the, uh, overage, I think the uniqueness of this situation, um, warrants it in this case, that would be my personal opinion. Also, um, this delegation of authority, um, resolution that, that Andy refers to is seven years old now, and it's, uh, a little long in the teeth, and this is one aspect of, there's, there, we're, staff will be bringing a, a updated delegation of authority to you at, for probably the end of July, and this is one aspect that we, we hope to change, because it's very.
Are we putting a. Are we putting, are we putting a cap on the dollar amount?
Yeah, there'd still be a cap, yeah. It's just this ten percent and whichever is lesser is, is very complicated for, um, procurement and staff to work with, so. We're, we're suggesting a different approach going forward. So I don't, I don't anticipate you'll ever have this kind of request again. So I'm, I'm not worried about the presidential value nature. I can ensure you, you will never have the correct request again.
It's been a while since I've heard long in the teeth. Good call.
Okay, I'll move board approve ten percent for one hundred seventy-four thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars fifty cents spending authority above the value of the awarded Main Street Water and Sewer Improvements Construction Contract.
Second.
I got a motion, I have a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and you're.
Against.
I apologize. Against, four one. And you're asking for the same request for ten percent on the second project, correct?
That is correct. The same rationale. In this instance, the ten percent value would, would amount to two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Thought you just said this wouldn't come before us again.
I lied, clearly.
Come on.
Okay. Understanding same rationale, where the board approved ten percent or two hundred nine, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents spending authority above the value of the awarded Springfield Avenue Water and Sewer Improvements Construction Project, Construction Contract.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, four one. Okay, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, thank you.
I, I appreciate that. That's, it is a precedent.
Yep, yep. Oh, yeah.
Okay, uh, what's your name? Chris? Any callers?
Uh, I think Rip Taylor on the line to wish Mr. Burke a happy birthday.
Okay. Is there somebody on the line?
Just kidding. Nobody's on the line.
Okay.
I think he just dated himself with that comment.
Rip Taylor.
Wow.
Yep. Actually, I just, I just heard Rip. I thought he said Rick at first. I was like, who's Rick Taylor?
Good old Rip Taylor.
Big mustache.
Yep.
Rip Taylor, come on.
He always threw stuff around.
Taylor's awesome. Okay, anything for open admin?
Was he an attorney?
He showed up on Johnny Carson's show.
The last thing's on TV. I used to love Rip Taylor. Um, anything for open admin? Okay, Wanda, why don't you come on up? Before this completely gets out of hand. Monday, July fourth, once again, the county offices, excuse me, are closed in observance of Independence Day. I know there are a lot of events happening between, uh, this Saturday and July fourth, so hopefully weather will be good and people will get out and be with family and friends. Tuesday, we have nothing scheduled. Wednesday, July sixth, there's a planning commission virtual.
Yeah, canceled.
There is nothing scheduled for Wednesday, July sixth. On, on Thursday, July seventh, we have open session. Go through a little bit of priority Carol, then we have merger of services provided by Carroll County, oh, at the Recovery Support Services Facility. They do a great job at RSS. Uh, proposed use of nine Carol funding, uh, regarding the commitment for opioid issues in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. FY twenty-one concurrency management report. We're going to hear some proposed amendments to chapter one fifty-three that deal with flood, floodplain management, along with chapter thirty-eight that deal with the floodplain construction. We will listen to and discuss potential amendments to chapter one fifty-four, the Water Resource Management, and then proposed amendments to chapter one fifty that deal with agricultural, agriculture, excuse me, forestry and natural resource conservation. And then we are looking at the creation of chapter one fifty-nine, which deals with agricultural land preservation. And chapter one sixty, the right to farm. Maybe we just have Chris Heinz sit up here with us during that whole time. Uh, Friday, nothing scheduled. Saturday, nothing scheduled. Commissioner Boucher has the podcast on the tenth. The following week, Transit Advisory Council meeting down in room one oh five, Commissioner Frazier, uh, three PM on Monday. Tuesday, July twelfth, I will be attending the Ag Center Board Meeting at seven PM. Wednesday, nothing scheduled. Thursday, we go into open session. First, uh, the sheriff and his team will talk about the opioid exam and treatment grant and award acceptance. We'll then have FY twenty-three sheriff's overtime grant and awards, award acceptance. IT will come in to talk about Cisco HyperFlex subscription renewal. Then we'll have a twenty twenty-one planning annual report from Ms. Eisenberg and her planning team. Uh, mid-cycle review from Ms. Eisenberg. Now be it so far for that morning. On Friday, Commissioner Wance will be attending the Baltimore Metropolitan Council Board of Directors Meeting at nine AM, and in four PM, Commissioner Boucher and Frazier will be attending the family summer bash at the summer, at the sports complex, excuse me.
And I believe Commissioner Frazier will be in the dunk tank?
I will be. Hopefully not in the dunk tank, but sitting above it.
I have to think about this. I might join you. I did this once before. As long as the weather's not cold.
Well, it's, I'm hoping the same, but, and I've done it before, but, you know.
Very big of you, by the way.
I have a fence in front of me. I feel protected.
Okay, Saturday, we have nothing. Saturday, I have the podcast. Did I miss anything at this time? Once again, uh, you know, it was mentioned earlier, civic duty, early voting is seventh through fourteenth, and then the primary election day is the nineteenth of July. I need a motion. We don't have any closed for answering, right? Cool.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion to adjourn. Got a second, any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.